All right, have your attention please. The public hearing before the Sawyer County Board of Appeals is hereby called to order 5:00 PM in Sawyer County Courthouse in Hayward. Present on behalf of the Board Al Gerber, Laura Russ, Steve Kelsey, Jim Tiffany, and Joe Barron's, from the office Jay Cathy, and also Representative TJ Duffy. Those persons desiring to appear to testify will be afforded the opportunity to do so. As recognized by the Chairman, that person will clearly state their full name before giving testimony. Each hearing will follow this order: reading of the application, submission of the file to the Board, application statement, presentation of evidence, testimony of those in support of the application, statements of persons in objection to the application, rebuttal as permitted by the Board, and decision by the Board. Order to repeat procedure requires that each side shall proceed without interruption by the other. All testimony will be addressed to the Board, and there will be no questions or arguments. Any persons agree by decision, the Board may appeal the decision to the Circuit Court within thirty days of the date following the Board's decision letter. The day following the signing of the Board's decision letter is the first day of the thirty day appeal filing period. This public hearing was published as a Class II notice in accordance with Chapter 985 Wisconsin statutes in Sawyer County Record and Sawyer County Gazette. Public hearing will follow this order: approval of minutes, variance of applications, new business, and adjournment. Before we proceed, the last time we had a meeting, there was at least five attorneys there, maybe even a sixth one, and the reason for some of them being there was there's some confusion about the decision. And a lot of the testimony that we heard prior to that meeting was inaudible. And there was some confusion as to what decision was made and why that decision was made. So we got to make sure that we all have our microphones on when we speak and that we were very precise in our decision. Cathy, I'm going to ask you, once a motion is made before, I ask for a second, I'm going to ask you to read it back to us, and then we'll proceed that way.
To make sure I have it.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, all right, let's go. You're too far away in this big room.
You'd be on item three of prelim matters.
Where'd help her? She took, just took my agenda.
Potential approval June 17th, meeting minutes.
Motion to approve? Okay, there's a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting and the discussion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
All in favor of the motions as presented, second five, saying aye.
Aye.
All, motion passed 5-0.
Moving on, we have three variance applications this evening. The first, this is a public hearing in the Town of Lendry, variance number 25-002. Owner Paul and Carol Wick, part of the Northwest One Corridor, the Southwest One Corridor, Section 25, Tomship 42, North Range 9 West. It is parcel 014942253218, which is tax ID 18314, also includes tax ID 18324. 3.97 acres, both of them are zoned, I'm sorry, one of the parcels is .233 acres and one is .397 acres, both are zoned residential recreational one. Application is for the 20-foot by 32-foot with 1-foot eaves at a height of 16 feet garage variance. This variance is requested as per Sawyer County Code of Ordinances Appendix D, Section 4.211, parent six, parent one, which would require the prior granting of variance for any structures closer than 30 feet to the center line of a private driveway, also per the Sawyer County Code of Ordinances Appendix D, Section 6.1, parent one, would require the prior granting of variance for any structure closer than 75 feet to the ordinary high watermark. The subject variance request is asking for 20 feet to the center line of a private road and 60 feet from the ordinary high watermark of Nelson Lake as part of discussion action for this case and including as part of my staff report. Again, this application of this variance is seeking relaxation of the code for reduced private road easement as well as a reduced lake setback easement. The size request is a 20-foot by 32-foot, 16-foot tall with 1-foot eaves garage as per the onset that was conducted by myself and Casey Masevitz. On April 15th, we laid out the proposed garage location in order to meet the required shoreline setbacks. The proposed garage would be in the middle of the road, so a median of setback distances were laid out. There's no additional buildable area on this property that would be and need to combine setbacks. The applicant will be combining the parcels on the west side of Tanning Point Road with an approved variance as the garage will be placed on a separate vacant parcel. The applicant also owns property on the east side of Tanning Point Road, but that property is also non-buildable. There's one smaller attached one-car garage associated with this property, but in conversations with the applicant, they were planning on converting this area into habitable living area, and thus the request for the separate detached garage. It should also be noted that several other garage variances have been granted in the recent past upon Tanning Point Road due to the inability or unique physical limitations. Most of these properties have shallow depths of lots. A majority of these detached accessory structures were only granted reduced road setbacks and not reduced lake setbacks because they had enough to meet the 75, but not enough to meet the 30. This one's a little bit different. We can't get 75, it'll be in the middle of the road. The total frontage on the west side of Tanning Point Road for the combined parcels is 190 feet of frontage. If shoreline vegetation buffers on restoration was required as part of this project, it would not, you would not be able to reduce the viewing access, or you would not be able to install a buffer zone to a greater width of 123 feet, as that would still allow 35% of their frontage allotted to the viewing and access corridor. As part of the proposed variance, approximate impervious surfaces would be at 11.5%. As per application and by motion of the Town Board, motion was approved. Jack Schustrom Supervisor, Michael Bandro Supervisor, Brent Daniels Supervisor, Jason Schustrom Supervisor, as a vote of four to one. There were, you know, actually there's a little bit more. The Lendry Town Board approved the variance, four ayes, one nay. However, the Board wanted to pass along language stating that the owners of the property seeking the two variances do have the option to build onto the existing structure with a second story to gain more living space, thereby negating the need for the variance. Robert Huberhold, Huberholdy Town Clerk. We did receive an additional correspondence from the DNR. Did the Board members all have a chance to read the correspondence that was sent from our office from the Department of Natural Resources? I am seeing every Board member acknowledging that they have read that, therefore being incorporated into the record. There were 17 additional notification letters sent out to adjacent property owners within 500 feet. No additional comments were received, that is all.
How many letters were sent?
Seventeen.
And no reply?
No reply.
From any of them?
Not that we have seen.
Okay. Okay, are the Wicks here or someone to speak on their behalf? You need to step to the microphone and identify yourself.
Okay. Okay, I'm Paul Wick, the wife girl.
Okay, welcome.
Yeah, I am.
Any additional information you can provide that was not included in your application package?
Any additional information?
Uh, no, everything's, you know, pretty much what Jay read off there.
I guess I think the main thing we want to do is the additional garage. Because we have such a small space right now, we can't even put our boat in there, that would be able to sit in the garage. So, that additional garage is just a single stall, just to be able to put access things in there. The garage that we have that's attached additionally, or originally was a carport through the house was not an actual garage.
There's, there's no entrance to the house garage.
Okay.
And then, the other thing that, you know, the variance we're requesting is for the garage. If we add living space, it might be five years or 10 years. And that has to be verbally, according to what I, the way I understand everything. So, you know, it's, like, our request is for the garage, not additional living space at this time.
Okay, I'm kind of a point of order here. Do we allow tag teams? Normally it's one-on-one, but as long as, as long as the record can stay clear.
I have a, I have to, I have a real hard time hearing, so.
Okay, all right. Interpreter. All right, continue, sorry to interrupt.
Anything more?
Uh, I don't think, no. Other than garage, whole garage is, I don't know, adjacent piece of property that we own, a separate piece of property. And there are, there's a huge house going up to the north of us that's, I don't know, 40, 50 feet from the water. And then, there's another garage going into the south of us that's on a 60-foot lot. And this lot that we got is 90 feet, so.
Okay, right, I'll ask Mr. Duffy a question. The Town replied about them adding up, and their, the applicant's response to that is that their application is for a garage addition, and should we be considering the Town's reply?
Well, the Town approved the garage addition. They said that they could add up. I think you can look at that in going through your three factors, but I don't necessarily believe that that's something you have to, I mean, they mentioned it, but they didn't follow it themselves. So, I don't, I don't even know why they put it in there when they didn't do it themselves.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions for the applicant, Laura?
Well, that point was the same point that the DNR made though, in their letter, that this, there is not a hardship because if, if they want to use the existing garage for additional living space and still have another garage, they could still have that existing garage and get more living space by going up. So that was what was pointed out to us from the DNR. I'm just drawing what they said in the letter.
Okay.
I guess I'd like to comment, after visiting the site and driving past their home on Turning Point Road, it's a cluster of garages and homes. Their neighbor built a garage or living space, it looks like at about five feet from their house, and squeezed it in. And looking at what they want to build, they're actually separating their garage from their home, and compared to what's past their house, I think this would actually be a little bit more appealing to the eye. I noticed the new construction down there, and it seems like they're on that road, they're really trying to tight pack a lot of things in. And the person from the Town Board that suggested that they build up on their house, that's a pretty extensive renovation to remove a roof and build the second floor on a house. I don't think that's really a practical solution.
That's one of my concerns.
Right, so, you know, if, if we can get past the distance to the water, I don't see, I would support the variance, but it is 60 feet, and I believe they require 75. So, I just, I just don't think that this would make Turning Point Road any worse than it already looks.
I drove the entire length of Turning Point Road when I saw it there yesterday, and there's other properties that are closer than 60 feet.
Is there hardly anything conforming out there?
No, a lot of construction before there was zoning, I think, but, Steve, did you have a comment?
Um, yeah, I think the three-point test that we have to consider is what limits us. Proving their hardship is pretty challenging. I agree that this would be no more invasive on the whole neighborhood than anything else that's been done out there for the history of that road, but proving a hardship, a growing family, increasing values, those are all things that we can't take into consideration for a variance. So I think that's our biggest challenge here. I don't think it'd hurt the neighborhood, but that's not our call.
Yeah, all right.
Then the other thing I hate, then, we're, we're willing to put the two lots together, you know, it's two separate lots now where the, where the house sits and where the proposed garage is. We're willing to combine them, so then hopefully there would never be any more building. Right now, we could, realistically, I believe we could sell off that vacant lot and somebody could come in there and build a house.
I don't think so.
Actually, yes, and I wanted to get into that during discussion action, and I can bring it up now if you'd like.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Wick had alluded to a house that was in construction that's a little bit further north of this, you may have seen it if you had gone past his property there. So that property was granted what's known, what is known as average setbacks. So average setbacks would take that you have a developmental pattern in which both properties next to you are inside the shoreline setback. Therefore, you can then use the average distance between those as your new 75 on your lot. This one here, and Mr. Wick owning the house, and I have it up on the screen, his house is the one that's highlighted right now, there is another parcel down here which would be, you know, the next one to the south. This vacant lot that he owns to the south would have average setbacks applied to that. He could sell that as a vacant lot, and someone could build a house at a 35-foot setback on that lot. They would still need to meet road setbacks, but they have basically a house that would be 35 feet from the water, 30 feet from the center line of the road, and probably close about 35 feet of depth that he would still be left with. So with him stating that he would combine that, there would be no average setback, and I don't believe the DNR kind of noted that or viewed that, and I wish I would have had that conversation with them to see if that would have changed their mind, but ultimately he could right now take out a land use permit to build a, a house with a tuck-under garage on that partial 35 feet from the water without a variance as an average setback.
Yeah.
Okay, any additional comments from the applicants?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, all right, I have to ask anyone else to speak on behalf of the application? Well, you can't, yeah. If you want, if you want to make that comment, you can step to the microphone, okay? All right. No one else to speak on behalf of the application? Anyone to speak in opposition to the application? Okay, discussion by the Board and decision by the Board.
I think if he's willing to combine them, that's, does something to me.
Get your leg so that she can hear. Oh, you've got it there.
Yeah.
You can.
I mean, I, that's better than having a house 35 feet from the water, which you could do.
But I, I agree, that's a, I think that's a win for the neighborhood if, if it takes that potential 35 foot from the water homestead out of the equation. As a point of order, do you need a motion before discussion?
No.
Okay. Lauren?
Okay, so we can place that condition upon granting the variance, that the variance would be granted based on the combination of the two lots, which is the only way to secure that actual scenario from not happening.
Well, that's true, but if, if you put a garage there, you couldn't put another structure on the lot anyway, but you would want to marry the two together, for sure.
Right, but what, I guess my point TJ is then, if we say, okay, we, we would grant the variance based on what Jay has just explained to us, we would grant that variance based on you combining those two lots, so there is no possibility of doing that.
But you make that a condition, for sure.
Correct.
I think that's a very, yeah, a palatable thing you could do as a condition. The other aspect, that these would be viewed as substandard-sized lots, and you are able to build on a substandard-sized lot so long as you can meet all other provisions, only if that substandard-sized lot was never combined into one parcel or built with an adjacent structure across the line. So even if you did put this into condition, there's other statutes that would prevent them from now placing another dwelling, because you're putting a garage across the line as part of that substandard lot, but I like that you had added as a condition to if you were going to make that as an approval item.
So, Mr. Duffy, what's the procedure for conjoining two lots?
Well, that's just a condition if you approve.
Yeah.
So, I think you still have to go through the three-step process, and, and I think whoever makes the motion, if that's what they want to do, it's a condition upon the fact that the two lots are married together and can't be sold separately.
It, it doesn't look like they're now currently CSMs.
No, I think they're.
Could we ask them to do one, make it once?
That's a little more expensive, you can say, this lot and this lot, in a deed you combine.
But then I think we know for sure, right?
That's true, but it's gonna, yes.
Each, each lot has a separate identity now.
They do, but if you combine two into one and make one CSM, then it's one lot CSM.
And the only thing I would say is, and I don't know what their building timeframe is, but I think most of us know the timeframe for a surveyor is three to four months out, so if they want, now maybe they don't, can't find a builder this year, but marrying them together in a deed that says these two lots can't be sold separately is enough to ensure that they're not going to be sold separately, so I don't, I don't.
And is that the only language that's required, is a deed that says they cannot be sold separately?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jay, one question I would have, if they kept it separate, and this is just a scenario, if they applied for a home on that lot, like was discussed, for a tuck-under garage, got the permit and never finished the house above, we've seen that happen probably, would that be legal?
They would have to get after-the-fact conversion, so what Corporation Counsel is alluding to is what we know, we commonly refer to as like a restrictive covenants or as a deed restriction, that the lots could not be sold separately until all their restrictions placed on there are removed. The restriction replacing on there would be that this is an accessory structure on a vacant chunk of land, and again, can't be sold separately unless you were to, you know, remove that restriction. So theoretically, someone 50 years down the road could say, well, I'm going to tear that garage down, I'm going to go back to maybe this average setback provisions and lock that into place. Or take out a land use permit, maybe I have enough room now with that garage there, I could still add on to the garage and create living quarters using average setbacks. So if you're using the, the aspects of, we don't want to see average setbacks granted on this lot, we think would be more palatable for something at 60 feet, you probably would want to say combine these lots as to one CSM lot. Yes, it's more expensive, yes, it's more time-consuming, but it, it's preventing other future development.
So they would then become one tax ID?
Yeah.
But the, the question you asked, which I don't know that Jay answered, is if they applied for a land use permit to build a house, the garage, and the house would be upstairs and the garage would be downstairs, no variance would be required, and usually need well-inseptic, you know, permits as well, but if they didn't finish it, I don't know, that was the question, what if they put the garage in and didn't finish the house?
Or, so, okay, so I thought you were talking about that, that they built this garage and then converted it to a house.
No, hypothetical, because the comment was made that they could technically get a permit without a variance to build a house on that second lot.
Right, oh, okay.
So if they did that, it was going to be ground floor garage, house above.
And never finished it.
In the exterior, it's a functional garage, and.
No, we, we would end up having a plague that, that the average setback provisions are not allowed for accessory structures, they're only allowed for principal dwelling.
So would it be in violation if it didn't become a resident?
Right, yeah.
Okay, and that's something.
And you can do a tuck-under, a tuck-under is still considered one principal structure, but you couldn't just build the garage portion and not ever convert it into a house, because...
You know, if you, but if you got a well-inseptic on that lot, and, you know, bathroom upstairs, I mean, whether it's all done or there's bumps on the wall, I mean, the living quarters is pretty.
Yeah, and it is, it's up to, to Uniform Dwelling Code, it would have to be built still to Uniform Dwelling Code specs. I do know that there is, you know, one house that has a, you know, garage door, you know, one of their walls of their house basically pulls up, it's actually kind of cool, but it is still a house, it just has a garage door, so, and that's nothing against code.
But yeah, that was your answer.
But Mr. and Mrs. Wick, are you guys following this? Kinda? All right, we'll continue our discussion then. It, it appears as though this CSM route is the, says all, does all, eliminates future adjustments or conditions, so I'm going to ask the Wicks if they are willing to do that. Understanding that it may.
Four, two lots, and one.
Made into one.
One parcel.
Yeah. I, I do know that they had a lot of surveying done out there the last couple of years, so I'm thinking that, that getting probably.
I think it's covered.
Okay, I'm sorry Cathy, without them speaking into the microphone, are you able to pick that up?
I, yeah, I've got it.
Okay, all right. All right, did it ask if anybody was in opposition?
It didn't.
Okay, right, any further discussion by the Board? All right, hearing none, is there someone to make a motion either for or against?
I'll make a motion to support the variance request with the understanding that the two lots will be combined.
Do we need the CSM language in there?
Yeah.
Not just a deed? Okay.
Combined by CSM?
Yeah, you can go ahead and clean that up for me. All right, combined by CSM.
How do we make additions to that if we choose? We have to try to amend that then? If I wanted to add something as a stipulation?
Well, we haven't made a second yet, so I think we can still piggyback onto the current.
But you would say, I want to second it with this additional condition or two, and, and see if the initial motion would accept that.
I would accept this with a stipulation that drainage control be created between the garage and the lakeshore, given that it's less than 75 feet, whether that be an approved rain garden, just something so there's no major runoff to that lake that's close.
So that was the second with that additional condition?
Yes.
Was the original?
So, so the original reader of the, first of the motion needs to accept that condition?
I accept it, but I, I fear we're over-complicating it a little bit for the Wicks. We're asking them to do a CFM to combine the lots and.
Okay, well.
Discussion on that?
Discussion on the motion, I, I believe, Joe, that 75-foot setback is a kind of a safe parameter, and that the addition to your motion is just a safeguard because it's less than 75. And they may very well have intended to put that in anyhow, but.
That's fine, I support that.
Okay, thank you.
Were you asking to make that determination, the zoning department, about what's needed or if anything's needed?
I think we would have to rely on that because we don't have the expertise on what makes a qualified runoff control.
I thought, heard you say drainage in the form of a rain guard.
Yeah, that's just one option.
Which is a great option to have, so, yeah, we can definitely do that, shouldn't be that difficult to accomplish either, so.
So, the motion would be some runoff control as approved by the zoning administration?
I'll get to state that again.
Yep.
And that's, the original motion maker approved that as well, I believe?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, before you speak again Steve, let's ask Cathy what she's got, okay?
Okay, let's, okay, motion by Joe to approve of having two lots combined by CSM. Kelsey seconded with mitigation, RE rain garden, with zoning department to control that for our rules that we have for mitigation. And Baron accepts both, and that's what I've got. And then you went on to discussion, is that all right?
I would add between the lake and the garage.
Between, no, not the garage.
See.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'll call for a vote on the motion and the amendment to the motion as presented. All those in favor, second five, you're saying aye? Aye. All pose same sign. Let the record reflect that the motion and amendment are passed by a vote of 5-0.
We will need fines of facts as well.
Yeah, with this three steps, I'm fighting for sure. Here with his three steps of dividing for sure.
Joe?
So we we do need findings of facts as to why you made the decision to approve. So as part of my kind of staff report, I do have kind of approval reasons. And really kind of going through this, the three step test is that you find that there is an unnecessary hardship due to blank that they have unique physical limitations due to blank, that it's not contrary to public interest because of blank. So I do need those as part of an approval reason for variances. And TJ has got some language there for attention.
So when you do approvals, you need to, you know, is there a hard justification? So it shouldn't be too hard to do that, but I mean, there's three things to do hardships. Who will be able to take the rights of others?
Right. And we just really need this as part of record because if if there was someone that was aggrieved to this decision and that they were to at this point file an appeal on this, this board has made no determination that they've met the three statutory requirements, right? So we're originally trying to to pull that out of you as to why did you make this determination? What steps did you use in your mind to to set that motion for approval? Just because if this went to circuit court, it'd probably be an easy kickback to you guys.
I mean, there's a assist.
Yeah.
Can we just speak up or? I think there are unique property limitations. The lot dimensions setback requirements are burdensome on this. I don't think we're overstepping the impact on the neighborhood, given the fact that they can possibly build within 30 some feet with a separate building permit. We are trying to mitigate the damage to the neighborhood by having further setbacks from the water. I think that they, the limitations of the dimensions of the lot is is in favor of this motion. I see no harm to the public interest. This is not a unique building on that road. There are buildings on the road that have been built not too many years ago that are likely even closer. So I don't think this added garage on a separate lot that will now be combined has any damage to public interest. I think the unnecessary hardship was not self imposed.
Okay.
The lot size is a hardship, in my opinion. They're doing what is possibly the best of alternatives there. They're not building within 35 feet of the water. They're mitigating with rain gardens. I feel that they're, they've fulfilled all three requirements for this variance.
And I would add, it appears that they are coming as far away from the water as possible, you know, like Steve mentioned. And and again, just, and I don't know what number this would fall under, but the current makeup of that neighborhood lends it to this, this actually being pretty good compared to what else is built down there.
And none of the hardships are self created?
Correct.
Okay.
Want to make sure everybody agrees with those. I suppose just wants to.
Does everybody understand the 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 findings of fact or any questions on any of the findings of fact? If so, speak up. All right, thank you. All right, you can stop by the zoning office and they'll walk you through the process. Thank you.
Moving on, this is our second variance applications, public here in the town of Draper, variance number 25 dash 003, owner Candice Berg in Jenniferburg Life Estate for Thomasburg. Part of the Northwest one quarter, the Northwest one quarter, lot four, tax ID 6361. It is point six two total acres on residential recreational one. Applications for detached 19 foot by 23 foot, which would be 20 foot by 24 foot with eaves. Height of 12 feet setback from the rear lot line would be five feet. Variance is requested for the Soria County Code of Ordinances, Appendix D, Section 18. Rear property line setbacks must be 40 feet. Applicant is requesting a reduced setback of five feet from the rear lot line. As part of my staff report, an onsite inspection was conducted by Casey Masevich on May 15th. At time of inspection, a proposed garage area was laid on the property. Garage was set in the proposed location that would seek a five foot setback from the rear lot line when a 40 foot minimum setback is required. An existing smaller shed is in this location would relocate it to another compliant location on the property. All other setbacks would be met. There was discussion of moving the garage slightly closer to the house. However, this would require relocation of an existing well. It would only increase the setback distance several feet, but if it would, but it would also make it difficult to gain access to the main door. There would also be additional buildable area that was observed on this lot at the time of inspection. However, this area would be in front of the house, between the house and the lake shore or to the north of the house. The applicant has provided explanation. And part of their additional documentation is why these areas would not be suitable in their interest and they would be viewed as physical limitations. See the attached additional information worksheet that was included as part of your packet. The proposed impervious surfaces with approval of the garage would be approximately 8.5% of the total land area. And the proposed garage would be located approximately 200 feet away from the ordinary high watermark. As by action of the town board, motion was approved. Jason Gerwin Chair, Jeff Heath Supervisor, Bradley Mulberg Supervisor. Review of the property has determined proper drainage and the new building would be a visual improvement to the property. Signed Kathy Stefanski Town Clerk. That is all. Any additional letters? 12 additional notification letters were sent out. Zero additional comments were received.
Okay. Did all or most of us get a chance to visit the site? Okay, all right. Are the Burks or someone here to speak on their behalf?
Hi, good evening to you all. I'm Candice Berg Flatley. I'm joining you by Zoom today. I apologize that I was unable to be there in person, but you've got myself tonight as one of the landowners. My sister Jennifer is also on the line as the other landowner and my father, Thomas, is in the audience tonight as the current life estate holder on the property.
Okay, do you have additional comments for the application?
Absolutely. So, you know, if if you can look at your packets, we've set out the information in there. As you can see, I I know many of you visited the site, which we certainly appreciate your time and energy in doing that. And if you take a look at kind of the overview drawings that we propose, we currently do not have any garage space on the property. The home was built prior to the current setbacks going into place. And the 40 foot setback actually bisects the house currently, if you were compliant with the 40 foot rear setback. And so in order to produce garage space and have a functional, you know, year round location and to have sufficient storage, we are asking for the variance tonight. We believe that the garage is located in really the only buildable location that would not be unduly burdensome on the property. And as we, I'm happy to speak to any of the the responses and issues that are set out in our application. But as we detailed, there there are, you know, concerns with each of the alternative locations, including the presence of our current well, the presence of our septic field, the proximity to the lake shore and the fact that for the northern adjacent space, we would have emergency access issues as well as the fact that the northern adjacent owners building, their home is actually two feet from the property line. And so it'd be burdensome on them in order to build in that space.
Oh, okay, thank you. Your your application was very thorough and answered a lot of the questions, probably before we even asked them. So we appreciate that. Our board has always been very diligent about researching the the application package completely. So I, we're going into different pretty well informed. So thank you. Is that the end of your comment?
Yes, and but I'm happy to take any questions or if there's any information that you guys would like to to receive.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on behalf of the application? Yep. Step to the microphone and identify yourself, sir.
Hey, I'm Thomas Berg. I have the life estate on the property. One of the reasons that we're asking for a garage back there is we're retired now. Before we have constantly hauled tools and equipment back and forth from Eau Claire. But now we're up here a lot and it's just getting a little too much to be to moving stuff back and forth. We have rented ways down the highway for the access for our stuff now, and we'd like to get away from that. I think everything else is pretty much explained in the responses in the packet.
I mean, thank you. Anyone else to speak on behalf of the application? All right, anyone to speak in opposition to the application? Hearing none, discussion by the board. When I was out there, this thing is going to be invisible to everybody except the Burks. The structure that they're proposing would fit inside the neighbor's garage four or five times. And I don't even think he can see it from the air. He would need a drone. It isn't overstated at all or excessive. And and it fits the space that that they're that they're proposing. That was my observation when I was out there yesterday.
I agree. My, I guess my question for Jay is a 40 foot setback. Is that normal or is that just unique to that township?
That is what the required setbacks are in Soria County Code of Ordinances would request and require a 40 foot setback from a rear property line. Why that is in there? Could not tell you. Do I think it's a little bit too much? Yeah, I do. Should that probably be revisited at some time? Probably. Is it right now? No. It's 40 foot setback.
And we heard testimony earlier that not even the house fits the 40 foot setback, so. That one's kind of out the window. This is definitely not a self created hardship.
I think there's a dotted line going through the house that probably represents 40 feet on that one drawing. And it's not a big garage with living space above it either.
Correct.
Make just one comment and I think it's important that the board in discussion talks about the findings somewhat before we get into a motion to approve because if we make the findings afterwards and we don't that we don't talk about them beforehand. So I think in discussion, going through some of the findings and then making a motion is a much cleaner way to do it because I think someone could argue that and say, well, they made a motion without even discussing any findings. And they did them afterwards. So how the heck did they make the findings? Even though the findings come after, I think it's important that when we discuss it, if we're going to approve or going to deny, it's important to go through some of the, all three of the findings in advance. Everybody goes, oh, they're all.
And I would say that you already kind of started to do that. You said, you know, it's it's not a self created hardship that, you know, the house is already inside the required setback. And that is what discussion is supposed to do. It's supposed to pull those elements as to why they meet the three step test. So I would concur with legal there.
Okay, thank you.
To keep up the discussion.
We're we're all in agreement that a garage is is for your own living is basically something you you absolutely have to have. And I want to reiterate what Al said. This was such an articulate presentation. It's like, do I really need to go out there? Gosh, everything is so laid out. I'm glad I did. I got to meet Mr. Berg. But as part of the findings of fact, there really is no alternative reasonable location for that based on the topography of of the property. To try to do that down front would require a ton of fill because it does this and this. And the place, like Al said, replacing the garage, the Burks will be the only one who know that know that it's there. It will not be, it will not be detrimental to the effects of others.
No, not at all.
Yeah, so it's not contrary to public interest because no one else will see it. It's not a self created hardship because the house is already in that required setback as well as, you know, this board is, you know, always deemed that having a garage or detached accessory structure in Northwest Wisconsin is is really, can we deem it as a hardship? Which we can, we've basically set precedent. I even tell people that when they come in that this board has set precedent that a garage is a hardship. However, depends on the size of the garage and your question. Is it 40 by 30 hardship? Well, no, maybe not, but you know, a modest two car garage, you know, this board has continuously stated that 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 is kind of a hardship. And then you did talk about, yeah, unique physical limitations that, you know, by placing it in the front in a compliant location, you know, would require additional, you know, fill because there is steep topography would, you know, potentially require relocation of a drain field or a septic system. So I do think in in that discussion you just had, you went through three elements of the three step test.
Okay, thank you. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, if someone would like to make a a motion either for or against the application as presented? I'll make that motion to accept the application as presented with no additional conditions.
I will second that motion.
Okay, motions were made and seconded. I believe the findings of fact have all been stated in our previous discussion, so I'm not going to reiterate those individually. Unless someone has additional comments, I'll call for a vote on the motion as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All post same sign. Let the record reflect that the motion was approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Burks.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
The office will help you with the application process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, this is public here in the town of Bass Lake, variance number 25 dash 004, owner Michael Savitsky. Grindstone Heights, lots nine through 11 of block four, tax ID 1139. It is point 562 total acres on residential recreational one. Application is for a 10 foot by 14 foot elevated deck on the east side of the dwelling. Variance is requested as per the Soria County Code of Ordinances, Appendix D, Section 4.211, parent three. All town road setbacks should have a minimum setback of 63 feet from the center line and 30 feet, 30 feet from the right of way. There's an additional asterix in that, in that in the town of Bass Lake, they may deem that certain roads within the Northwoods Beach subdivision area would have a lesser setback, which in case this is and does fall into, the applicants are requesting a six foot setback from the right of way. As per my staff report, again, this is for the construction of a 10 foot by 14 foot elevated deck. And again, per those town of Bass Lake roads that are 30 feet wide, shall have a 44 foot setback from center line. The applicants are requesting a six foot setback from the right of way or 21 feet from the center line. All other setbacks are to be met. An onsite inspection report was conducted by Casey Mosevitz on May 16th of 2025. At that time of the onsite, the proposed deck area was laid out. This deck is for a, is for the second story of the house. As for the applicant's statement, the house was originally approved at the current setbacks by variance 23 dash 005. However, a deck was not shown as part of that original variance request and the additional deck structure would only be permitted by variance approval. This portion of Poplar Road is a platted town road. However, it was, it is non developed and it dead ends approximately 135 feet past the now existing approved previous variance house. As by action of the town board, motion was approved. I don't see, they didn't check off who all approved. They all signed their names. So if you sign your names and the action was approved, you would think that the vote was five to zero. Otherwise, you wouldn't sign your name. There was no additional comments by the town clerk. But I do have the approval form of the town. If anyone likes to, would like to see it. There were six additional notification letters sent out to adjacent property owners. No additional comments were received. That is all.
Thank you. Are the Savitskis here or someone to speak on their behalf?
My name is Mike Savitsky. And the reason you might not have had all the signatures is because Marshall had a set him say, Marshall Savitsky had a set aside from the meeting because of our relationship. We are asking for this deck also for egress for the upstairs of this building in case there would be fire. We are asking for this deck also for egress for the upstairs of this building in case there would be fire. I noticed that wasn't mentioned in there. Um. It's a road that goes to nowhere. Uh, some of you have come out and looked. If you've looked at the property, you'll understand that the only one that's ever gonna see this deck is probably us. Is there any questions for me that you would like to ask me about this location and what we're trying to do?
Did you folks have this house built?
Uh, I've owned the property for almost forty-two years. I built a cabin on it back in ninety. I had a builder two years ago. Put a home on it so that we can live here. Hill, hill construction. Wonderful job. Uh, so now we're attempting to live up here. And uh, this would be a feature that would be safe for us to, as a fire escape. And I guess, other than that, we'd like to put at least a table and a couple of chairs up there. If we've got, uh, if you, uh, if you would like to see pictures, I can show you those. Of what it looks like. We've got a rim Joyce left from the builder.
I was out there.
That they would just extend out ten feet and then we would get a staircase off of that.
Did you research other fire escape options?
Uh, well, there's, you got stairs inside. This gives you a second option. The fire escape issue.
I understand that, but um, ten by fourteen.
Well, we were told by the zoning, we could put a, a, like a five or six-foot deck and stairs without. Coming here to ask for permission for a little larger. So we could do a small deck. It would just not be very usable.
Well, that, that isn't the point, though, is it?
Well, to move furniture in and out and such, but uh. I guess I, I believe the deck would be a good feature for our family and, and living space.
Jay, what, what? I know a four-foot or three-foot sidewalk on ground level obviously is permitted. Is there a permitted size for a second-story balcony or whatever you want to call it?
Yeah, so sixty inches, which actually five feet is the walkway, which is an exempt structure, which you're allowed to have with inside the shoreline setbacks. So you're allowed a five-foot wide walkway that goes down to the water and that doesn't require variance. Uh, we've had a longstanding allowed ingress and egress dimensions for decks or patios. Um, which is one foot beyond each side of the door and four feet out. As it allowed ingress and egress. So you, for some reason, you were, you know, you set the house right at seventy-five feet and now you got us, you know, a door there. It's like, oh, I gotta get out to this door. Now let's say it's your standard three-foot wide door. That'd be five feet by four feet that we would allow as an exempt structure, but that would be, that would be it. And that would be the case here as well. If there's a doorway there, we would allow one foot beyond each side of the door, four feet out without variance. Uh, this is, you know, requesting more than just the allowed ingress egress.
Well, there's the patio, there's a patio door there.
Um, yes, if it's a six-foot slider, in essence, it could be eight by four then. As ingress egress.
Uh, another question I have, Jay, which is not, the relevance to this, I guess, is there because we granted the variance for that property in the first, first place. Where did I get it in my head that there is only one variance property?
I don't know that. I've never heard that before. Um, unless you condition that we would never.
Yeah, it's, it's been, it's been said before that, you know, you don't get another variance. A variance is a, it's a one-shot deal.
Yeah. I've not heard that before. Uh, obviously, there's a, a one-year refiling timeframe. Uh, but there are several properties out there that have multiple variances on them.
Okay.
And I know, you know, a previous uh, uh, board member, uh, Mark Olson, you know, was always wanting those additional variance case files. You know, given as, as part of other variances. So we, we see multiple properties with multiple variances.
My memory is similar to yours, though. I, I.
You're the only one. I've, I've never heard that before.
We're the old timers.
Yeah, right.
Um, in visiting the property, it's the. No proximity to the lake. There is no, and I get, get it. It's, it's not that it's a hardship for them. It is not stretching to say that this would be a hardship. Variance grant, uh, doesn't, doesn't fit the case, but there really is no road there. There's, there's no road. It's.
Still a property.
Yeah. But there is not a road.
So a normal setback would be forty feet at that point because that's a back lot line?
Um, no, it's a little bit different when it comes to roads. So. Roads are, yeah, they're, they're different. And be it that this road is a part of the Northwoods Beach subdivision and is thirty feet. Of width, the required setback distance on this road in Northwoods Beach is forty-four from center line. They're ultimately requesting twenty-one from center line.
It, it didn't appear to me that a road really even existed. I thought your driveway was the road going in. Is, if, is the road maintained by the town of Bass Lake when Truett Plows, does he plow down that road? I don't think so. I live on the same road and I know where the plows and I would think his plow stops at your driveway. Um, so the hardship is, it's, in my opinion, is it's a non-defined road. It's a road that is no longer a road. At some point, when plot maps were made for the town of Bass Lake, yeah, they indicated it was a road, but the reality is it's not a road. So hardship is, is he's being dealt a hand where they say it's a road, but it's not. It's not a maintained road like the rest of the roads.
And, and going back to you, let's say the town was to abandon this portion of the road. Um, generally, when an abandonment happens, they give half to one side, half to the other. And even if that was the case, then yes, then it would be a rear lot line setback, which would require forty. And again, they're requesting basically twenty-one then from what would be a rear lot line if the road was ever abandoned. So you could look at it that way as well.
But it hasn't been abandoned.
No.
And no request to a, for abandonment has been made.
And even though, even if it was abandoned, you'd still end up hearing a variance for a rear lot line setback. So regardless of whether or not the road is there or not there, it still would need a variance for this deck.
Was there anything from their planning commission? Did the planning commission pass it and, and then give it to the town board?
Yeah, it doesn't say in here. Um, generally, we would, you know, have, you know, additional correspondence from the planning commissions once in a while. I, I don't see anything here. You have to.
Bass Lake is last their work, so they may be a little behind.
Oh, I didn't know that.
When this property was originally figured, by the time you do all the setbacks, I get to make a building three-foot wide was when the first variance was figured out. It's because of this, we can do, take care of the lakeside. It's the backside, which is literally a road that goes to nowhere. I can give you history about it, but it's hearsay from me. But it's all wet, it's all just woods. I mean, if you've walked out there and looked, it's. There's nothing there.
No, there's wetland.
Right, well, yeah, I, I hear you there. But there's.
Look to me like the road right away is wetland.
The, the stumbling block for me is, and, and I don't um, suggest that you don't need an egress point. The stumbling block for me is there is an existing avenue for them to get that.
Yep.
Um. And I, I don't think I'm misinterpreting their request when I think that. They're not asking for, they're asking for more than an egress. They're asking for a patio.
Yep.
Um. And, and I guess they can get egress without a patio. There was even a comment earlier that, um, they're gonna add some furniture. Probably kind of nice to sit outside in the morning and listen to the birds and look at that swamp, but um. That isn't what the current ordinance allows. Um. I don't know, what, what's the cost to apply for a variance? About five hundred bucks?
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty. Ouch. Um. And they could get uh, that fire escape without having to. Ask us to um, re- request uh, something more.
Jay, I have a question. By building this house two years ago to the dimension they did, in some regards hypothetically, that exacerbated their own hardship. If it was twenty feet shorter, the setback from the right-of-way would be significantly less.
Uh, less, yes, but um, you know, as you've heard, the applicant stated, I mean, they really only have like, it's like three to five feet of, of buildable area. Everything outside of that is going to require a variance. So, you know, you know, if they were to, you know, shorten the house and, you know, had added this. Right, and, and then added this deck on to their initial variance proposal, I guess, how would you view it at, at, at that point? You know, that, that would be a question to ask, but um.
Can't go back.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I can't really state more than, than that.
Well, the hardships could be found in the property lines and our setbacks. I mean, truly, it's been a hardship because we've had this property for forty-two years. And uh. I bought it actually from uh, an uncle who had it prior to that twenty-some years. So we're, we're stuck with the hardship of being the property and the setbacks and, and literally it's. We're talking about a setback off of something that's never gonna be there. If you've walked down there, you will see what I, what I'm talking about.
I guess my uh, question or, or thought is that setbacks from roads are probably for safety. For vehicles traveling uh, near homes and um, vehicles that might go too fast and run into the home, run into the deck. No vehicles travel on this road. It's a dead end. It, it's, it's the end of the line of Poplar Avenue. And, and perhaps there's a process for asking the road to be abandoned. I don't know what that is. I don't know if that's ever done. Perhaps you can go and buy the road or buy that property from the town of Bass Lake. I don't know how complicated that, I, I don't know what it is. But it just seems a, a little bit. I don't know. It, it doesn't. Why would a setback on a road be needed if the road isn't used as a road?
But even if the road is gone, there's still a, you know, potential rear lot line setback. And I, you know, maybe this isn't my place, but I, I definitely think that this isn't contrary to public interest, right? Because there's, again, no one goes down there and no one's ever seen it. I think there is unique physical limitations here, right? Pinched between this road, the lake, everything else. I think it's really that the hardship is what you should focus on. And whether or not you think having a ten-by-fourteen deck as an ingress egress is a hardship. You know, you've heard the applicant, you know, state that, you know, it's a hardship in having this property with those limitations, but those aren't really, that's not really what hardship is getting at. That's a unique physical limitation of the property that prevents you from placing it in a compliant location. You gotta look at what's being requested as the deck itself. And is that a hardship for this applicant?
And we can all certainly appreciate the desire to have a second. Point of egress in case of a fire or some other catastrophe. Um, but gosh, you look around. There aren't very many second-story dwellings that have two designated points of, of um, escape.
And he's got that, or he could have it without a variance.
Correct. Um, okay. Uh. Good discussion. Are you done, sir? Any, any additional comments?
I'd love to see this go our way, obviously.
Okay. Sorry.
So if you have any questions, I'd certainly like to answer them for you guys. I do believe this.
We, we very well may have some additional questions.
The hardship for us.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else to speak in support of the application?
My name is Janelle Savitsky, his wife. Um, just to want to clarify, did you say that there were two egresses on the second floor or not?
No, I did not say that. I, I said there are a lot of two-story homes that do not have a second.
Have a second. Okay, okay. I did misunderstood that. Thank you.
Maybe I wasn't clear. Thank you. Anyone else to speak on behalf of the application? Anyone to speak in opposition to the application? You know, when there's no one here, do we have to ask that? I suppose they, they can zoom in?
Yeah, there is no.
Sorry. All right. Uh, hearing none, discussion by the board. Has, has the board ever? Not met all three criteria?
Yes.
We have, we have, but we get called on it.
I, I think Jay's right. It comes down to. The one factor. Hardship. I don't think a ten-by-fourteen deck would hurt anybody or anything out there, but looking at the rules and regulations we are bound to follow. I, I'm not sure that that's a hardship. In definition. I'm struggling with it. I don't think it would hurt a thing.
I, I don't either. I, I really don't.
That's beyond. Personal emotion.
Over my years on the board, um, there's been a lot of. And it always seems to involve the backside of the house, uh, uh, where no one's gonna see it or ever, hopefully, it never needs to be used uh, for an emergency escape. But um, uh. Those, you know, we, we don't write the rules. We just gotta play by them. Um.
If you, if you want to speak through.
My name is Mike Savitsky. But wouldn't the, the setbacks create a hardship because anybody normally could have a deck this size?
Um, I'll let Jay answer that.
In a normal situation, anybody can have a fourteen-by-ten deck, but we can't because of the setbacks. And that's created a hardship for us.
I'm glad court counsel answered that, no.
Well, the issue is, is a couple. One is that, um. You bought a lot that had the limitations that it had.
I bought a lot forty-two years ago that had no limitations.
Well, and, and you could have built for it two years ago also. But, but when you, when you, when you got a variance to build the house, probably was been the time to ask for that then.
And I agree.
The, the, the thing is here is that the main focus of the request is for second-floor access. Okay, and, and from what Jay has said and what you've said is that second-floor access is obtainable without a variance. So we're asking for larger access than just, for larger depth than what you would be allowed with Jay. So um, what, what, I think what you, what you're getting at here is that this is more of a benefit. And I, I get that sometimes a garage can be a benefit, an extra bathroom can be a benefit. But um, what people want isn't necessarily a hardship. So um, the hardship of not having egress on the second story is not there because you can get that. It's wanting more space up there to put furniture or whatever else. And, and I, I think that's what they're struggling with is that the hardship. And you have a small lot, but when you have a small lot, I mean, you have to live within the bounds of that lot. If you get a variance, you get a variance for something that's, that's necessary for the house. And so I think that, that's kind of where they're at. And so I'm not saying that they're not gonna grant it. Right. I can see where there, there's a disconnect on whether it's a hardship or not a hardship.
And, and it's actually not a small lot. It's four lots.
Small, small lot width.
Yeah, the depth is what's killing us there.
Right.
And the setbacks have created this hardship throughout this whole process.
You can, I mean, if I wanted to go down to Little Grindstone, because we used to live on a lake and hunt there.
Right.
We could drive by your house, I believe, down to a spot to get out and walk through the woods or not anymore. I used to be able to. I mean, it's a public road there, I think.
Right, you might have been a long time ago. Right, you might have been a long time ago because my dad was raised up here and told me they did logging out of there. And if you've gone down the channel, you'll see there's old pilings and an old bridge. Right, right. I mean, it's what it is.
Right, but I mean, I think the road does go beyond you, so if someone wanted to.
Right.
Yeah, that's what they do, and I'm not saying they do, because if you walk down there, what do you got? You can't do anything.
Well, right. I mean, not that I want the road back there.
But I think that the question is, is that you may consider a hardship.
Right.
But based on the rules that they have to follow, they have to determine individually whether they believe it's a hardship or not.
I'm trying to pitch my story.
I get it. Yep, I get it. And I think they all agree that you believe it's a hardship, whether they believe it's a hardship.
And it's the property lines and the setbacks that have created this to get us to this point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That patio door, Jay, what were the dimensions of it?
Well, general sliding patio door, six foot.
Do we know whether this one is six foot?
It is.
It is? Okay. And they get one foot on each side, so that's eight, and they can come out?
Four.
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 So what's four by eight? Thirty-two. And ten by fourteen is a hundred and forty. So I guess, is there a hardship between a thirty-two-foot egress versus a hundred and forty-foot egress?
An unnecessary hardship is the core requirement of the property owner to demonstrate that the zoning regulation, if applied strictly, would create a hardship that prevents reasonable use of the property. This hardship cannot be simply a matter of inconvenience or desire for more profitable outcome. It must be tied to the unique characteristics of the property. What does that mean? You guys decide.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Is someone, a member of the board willing to make a motion to either approve or deny the application as presented? Well, it'd be easier to say yes than it is to say no. I will make an application to deny the, or I would make a motion to deny the application as presented based on our findings of fact that no hardship exists. Egress can be obtained without a permitted, within the permitting process. Any discussion on the motion?
No, little.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure this the right way in my head. I, when you go back there and when it's talking about a setback from a road, there is no road. There just is no road. I mean, it's like a swamp and there's trees in it and nobody is going to be driving back there. You could maybe hike partway back on a town road. So isn't it? A deck is an accepted addition to a home. And I'm usually on the other side of the fence on this sort of thing, but when viewing it, it seems it is not going to be detrimental to anyone because it's a house. If I were the Savitskis, I would be pursuing abandoning that road. However, I mean, that prevents any problems in the future, but if that road had been existing and used, if that road was being used when they built this home two years ago, they probably wouldn't have built the house right there if people were going to be driving right off the corner of their house. So in anticipation, they probably, and probably rightfully so, thought at some point, obviously, there was a patio door put there, we would want to have a deck off the side.
Okay, one moment, please. Before we get into a discussion on the motion, I think technically we need to have a second. And the first, the first, I screwed that up. I asked for discussion. Is there a second to the motion as presented? And the motion, Kathy, is to deny the application as presented. Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Second by Jim. Okay, now we can continue.
I'm not saying it again.
No, it's already on the record. And Laura, I completely agree with you, but that's not the court that they are allowing us to play on. I remember when that, when that variance request from two years ago was granted, and there was some discussion about some, I didn't walk all the way to the end of that, but there was some discussion about use. And I believe you heard the comment about that again tonight, that, you know, even though it's probable no one's ever going to see it, and it's probable no one's ever going to use that road, we have, I think we have to react as though it's still there and may have some future use.
And I'll say the adjacent landowner to the south there is actually Slier County. Slier County owns that swamp to the south.
Which is a public area. I made that motion to deny, and if that motion is not approved, I'm not going to be one bit disappointed.
I agree with Laura here. They probably could have built that deck and no one would have known about it. And I, maybe, maybe not. I don't know. But again, it's not a usable road. I'm really struggling with the setback issues. And I can say, I feel that the fact that it's not a usable road is a hardship. Because if it was a usable road, they'd have additional access to the property. But it's not. They built a nice home. They improved the property. But they weren't able to use the road that is defined in the plot maps.
Good comment, Joe. So motion's been made and seconded. Are there any additional comments? Okay, I'll call for a vote to approve the motion as presented, and the motion once again is to deny, deny the application. All those in favor of the motion to deny, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those in against the motion, how to, how to, how to state?
Opposed to the motion.
Pardon? Those opposed to the motion, say by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Three. The motion to deny the application is failed by a vote of two in favor, three against. So now, is there an additional motion to approve the request as presented? Or to redefine the, we could put restrictions on it to, so it'd be compliant to what is already permitted? Or we could vote to grant it as, as applied for with this ten by fourteen deck?
Can I throw in a hypothetical?
Sure.
Okay, so what if all of a sudden, what if all of a sudden they decide that, by gosh, we're going to start using that road? Let's get that thing paved over and let's, let's use it. What happens if the deck is sitting there? Do they have to tear the deck down because it's?
It's not in the right of way. It's just near six feet from the right of way.
But if they would start doing it, then as the Savitskis were sitting on their deck, they could have traffic, and it's never going to be traffic. But that's, it's just that that is, that is something that could happen.
We look at Tanning Point Road, there are those cases that are already occurring.
Jay, can you read the end of that hardship statement you read?
I got rid of this.
Again, I'm sorry, but.
The code is unnecessary burdensome, and the landowner is not able to enact a permitted use without the relaxation standards. That's ultimately what a hardship is. The other one that I read before, I found online, I already closed out. I could try to find it again. It usually means that a property cannot be used for permitted use or would be unduly burdensome due to unique physical limitations of the property. A hardship must be more than a mere inconvenience or preference for more of a lenient standard. Really what a hardship zoning variance is for.
So if if a motion to deny the request is, if that fails, does that mean that it automatically is approved?
No.
Okay, so we can put conditions on the approval.
Well, some, I mean.
Or any.
Someone can make another motion, and I assume they approve. You know, it's, the board members are due, so you can't debate from the chair what they do. So I mean, no one gets a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion. Okay, based on our discussion, I would like to make a motion to approve this variance request, knowing that the hardship piece is somewhat in flux with the board. Still feel that is a reasonable request. So to clarify, their request is for ten by fourteen and? That is correct. The request to support the ten by fourteen, which is not a large deck, but it is larger than an egress, but it's not a huge deck at all. So I support ten by fourteen.
My only thought is, as part of the motion, because there's been discussion about hardship or against, that I would suggest, as legal counsel, that you provide some background as to why you think this is a hardship and the deck should be approved.
I believe it's a hardship because they're dealing with a road that has not been maintained for years. Even though it is defined as a road, it is not actually a road.
I think to build on that, the hardship could be justified as not just the road location, but even if the road wasn't there, center line would still be substandard setback. It's a limitation of the lot configuration that's a hardship on this property.
Good one.
Okay, a motion that been made, and we all understand what it was. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as presented, signify, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those against, same sign? That the record reflected the motion to approve passes by a vote of four to one. All right. Good discussion. All right. Any, Kathy, we got anything in the hopper?
Yes, we do. Next month we'll have one case.
Okay.
And then I'm also bringing out the calendar because we will not have any cases for October, but probably for November, so.
When would the September meeting be? I may be gone.
Third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday, which I think is the eighteenth. I think some vacation changes are in order, Al?
No, it'd be the sixteen.
Thank you.
All right. And the variance case we have for next month is for an after-the-fact deck construction.
Is it too close to a road?
It is. And it is for the new, I don't know if I can discuss this with them, but. Yeah, yeah, that's all I'm saying. It's for an after-the-fact deck. It's on the new WayPro building that is located off of Ranch Road, which if you drive down seventy-seven, you'll see it on your way home.
The new what building?
It's called WayPro. It is a gym fitness facility, the one right on Ranch Road. Yeah. Yeah. They built an after-the-fact deck too close to the road.
Okay, before we adjourn, I have something I would like to bring up.
Okay.
Okay.
This is the other business portion.
Okay, so am I speaking in the right?
I sure hope so.
Okay. The way we treat each other on this board. In June, we remanded a case back to the zoning committee, an administrative appeal. I understand why it wasn't on the June zoning meeting to rediscuss. We remanded it for clarification. So the June meeting for zoning was two days after our meeting, so that was not really doable. But it was not on the July meeting, and it was not at the August meeting for the zoning committee is why.
It's gone to circuit court. Got kicked out of county aspects. It's at circuit court now. So it got appealed. That decision to remand back to zoning committee got appealed. And that the bylaws don't allow it to get remanded back to zoning committee is what they're challenging in circuit court. He's brought in, yeah, he's brought into that poll as well now, so. So that's giving you some update on that. The other ones have not been appealed, so they'll be finalized. But the administrative appeal is now in circuit court, and I believe there's a scheduling confrontation for the beginning of October on that one. They did not pass the restraining order.
I know.
So there was two aspects that they submitted to circuit court. One, they wanted a restraining order for no building on that hundred-foot strip of land. And one was for an appeal of your determination to remand it back to zoning committee. And that is the scheduling conflict, or scheduling conference, what do they call it? Yeah, scheduling conference for, I believe it's October thirteenth.
And I said that, just that wanted to, and the reason that I, the restraining order, which of it was, is that you're training someone that's not part of variance. Really. So I mean, I've got various, I've seen the case between the neighbor and the appeals.
Well, let me to start. They had an appeal.
Builder is Bone Shotz, who's not really part of the appeal. It's about him. So he didn't get notice of any injunction. So how does the court issue injunction against someone? They didn't get any notice of it, trying to do.
See, TJ, here's what confused me about that in the first place. It was remanded for clarification and yet construction continued. Maybe I'm saying that perhaps our legal counsel that evening should have told us, okay, if you're, if you are remanding this because you want clarification on what is actually supposed to be happening, add that to your motion, or add that to what you said, so that they could not continue. They went right ahead with what they were doing.
I was at the meeting.
I know, but I'm just asking, what isn't usually remanding for clarification, doesn't that mean you stop that till we get this figured out?
I understand the parties in front of you that day was the neighbor that was appealing the decision that Jay made to change the minutes to what the F said. Those are the two parties, okay? Bone Shotz was an interested party, but he was not a party to that proceeding in front of you.
I'd have to go, I have to go back, and well, obviously, you guys know a lot more about it than I do, but I'd have to look back at, that was just part of the case as it was presented, that there was an error.
There was an appeal to you that Jay erroneously corrected the minutes of the zone.
Correct, that was the appeal.
And they were saying that Jay did something wrong, and they came before you to say, answer whether he could be there or not. So the two parties to that deal were the neighbor's attorney and Jay, zoning committee or zoning administrator, and you were making a decision based on that. So for you to say, stop the construction, Jay's not doing the construction. You're not doing the construction. The zoning committee is not doing the construction. Bone Shotz is, and he wasn't a party to that discussion and that appeal.
I don't think he got notification of the restraining order either. I think that was part of it. Because they were filing a restraining order against the case as a whole and the land he's permitted as a whole, but yet the the actual owner of the property was never served as part of the restraining order.
How am I going to restrain Bone Shotz when he never got notice that there's a restraining order pending?
Officially.
I guess.
I mean, it's, it's a legal process, but, but you, even if, if Bone Shotz got noticed, at least there'd be a discussion with all the parties there. When, when that hearing took place, it was the attorney for you guys, the attorney for Jay. And.
Attorney for Smolin.
And the attorney for Smolin, and that was it.
When did this get, when did this go to Circuit Court? When was it filed at Circuit Court?
Well, it was within the thirty days.
It was in the thirty days of, of the June hearing when it actually went to Circuit Court. It was just a couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago.
And it was.
Okay, but then how come we're all left expecting that that was remanded back to zoning and I'm looking for. Listening to all of the zoning hearings or attending, so I can hear what they have to say about this.
You even made, you guys remanded it back to the zoning committee. They appealed that decision saying you're not able to do that.
Okay, so stop right there. Why don't we get, why don't we get notified?
Your, your attorney did.
You should have. I, when we called you, like, I found this info on C cap because I didn't even get notice of it. Now I got served for this one in October, but it's like. I, I don't know if it's Circuit Court that's not doing it right, or if it's the attorney for Smolin that isn't notifying the correct parties.
Smolin, because initially when he filed this, nobody got notice. And the judge is like. Nobody got notice. And then he, then he found these notice out that they had that status conference last week.
Okay, but. It, it should have, it should have been remanded in, to the zoning committee, certainly at their July meeting, which was.
Right, and we, we had plans of getting this to zoning committee, but as soon as someone files a Circuit Court appeal of your decision, we stop. That is a, that is a stop.
So they filed that before the zoning committee meeting in July.
Yes.
Correct. Yeah, because we had it on there. And then Jay goes, you gotta give that off there. I'm like, what?
Yeah, it was only like a few days before we were ready to go. And I was talking with our legal counsel, it's like, how do I get this notice? How do I get this published right? We want to make sure we have this right. And she said, oh, did you see this on ski, C cap? I just found it. And that's when we texted or emailed with Al, Al, did you get served on this? Like, no, I had no idea about this. So we pulled it off a zoning committee because that wouldn't stop anything, because they're appealing your determination. That you were able to send this even back to zoning committee. So why would we move forward if it's already moved up to Circuit Court? I'm not happy with it either, Laura.
Sure you're not, but it just, it makes you feeling, feel really out in left field that we had all this discussion and we ended up deciding, let's remand this and get this clarified. Because as Al was stating earlier this evening, without those mics on. You can't, things get jumbled up and you thought you heard it correctly and maybe you didn't hear it correctly or. Or sometimes it's just who you're dealing with.
Have this thing like right here when you're talking, loud and clear.
When you turn it off, it's like they make noises so that you don't get that on.
Yeah.
We are still in live session here if we want to adjourn and then discuss more outside of it, we can, but.
No, I, I think it needs to be till we all understand that.
I would just like to be better informed, so I don't.
Yeah, I will inform you of what happens at Circuit Court because I'm assuming that Circuit Court's either going to uphold or remand or deny a decision. And if they remand it back to this board, you're going to know about it, so.
So at that point, we're still in the same position we were back then.
Potentially.
They, they could remand it back to the zoning committee.
Yeah.
The, the, the circuit court can do that. For your bylaws, you technically are not able to. Because they're appealing their decision to you. Why are we sending it back there? It's like the appellate court saying, I'm sending it back to the circuit court.
So you're, you're saying our legal representative that evening did not realize that because he told us we could do that.
Well, and it's still, there's always two sides to every legal argument. And it made sense to do that, it really did. And so sometimes common sense is trumped by legal sense.
Like, by the law.
Common sense made, made sense what you were doing.
Common sense, I would agree. I think that should have gone back to zoning committee and they rehabbed it out.
If it comes back to us, we're at the same position again and listening to all the audio, whatever, I have no more. The judge, the judge would make a decision or they'll send it back to the zoning committee.
If you send it back to you for some reason, what we would end up doing is holding a. A basically a, a de novo hearing and basically bringing zoning committee into this board to testify. As opposed to remand it back to zoning committee's meeting, if it got remanded back to here, we would bring in zoning committee to hear.
What happens if, I understand that most of those members are no longer there. So would that be bringing back the old members? Even though they're no longer serving. And then you guys make a decision that they made or make a decision.
Based on their testimony?
Yeah, they're saying we're not.
Well, just as, one more little added background is, and I understand that the clarification issue because. I was still town chairman at the time and on the planning commission when this initially came before everybody and. Went through, I told Jay this earlier, Patty still records on a cassette tape replayer, player every meeting. And by God, you couldn't make out four words on that recording because people didn't have a microphone in my hall and it was echoing and everybody was chattering. So what we all said, we know what we thought we said. But what was actually said, we're not clear on because the recording was not clear.
Time to spend all the money on this, the townships don't have the money to spend on that.
Yet still there's.
Yeah.
Room, room for error because you heard it one way and Jay interpreted it a different way. So, um. Yeah, there has to be a vehicle for. For everybody to be on the same page.
My thoughts, I'll pull back, but if there was a mistake in the minutes. Jay should be allowed to correct those to what was actually done. I mean, let's say the board said. You know, we're going to allow a deck and it's got to be twenty feet from the lot line. And then in the minutes it says, it's got to be fifteen feet from the lot line. And Jay goes back and listens to the minutes, again, we did the, listens to the tape and says, we did the minutes wrong. I think he has the authority to correct that. They're saying he doesn't, but. How dumb would that be to go with something that they're formed and agree to?
Yet the tape tells the truth.
Right.
So.
So.
Was it twenty or was it fifteen? You know, and, and, and the tape would tell us that.
But where's the authority to fix that? You know, I guess you'd go back to the zoning committee and put it back on the agenda, but what's the reason for putting it back down the agenda? We made a decision, but we can't tell what it was.
Right, there. That's, that's the reason to go back. All right.
And I think that, okay, attorney for the neighbor has, you know, great. Argument that she doesn't like this, but I think the arguments they're making to stop it are horrible. That's just, and if someone came to me with those arguments, I'd like a better argument. But with those ones then saying, unless they, unless there's something in the, in the tape that they can say. They said one fifty and not a hundred. What are we doing here? I mean, you had your change during you. You got the hundred, or maybe you didn't think that a hundred foot meant that that was going to be all trees or that was going to be houses, but. That was decided.
Exactly.
Camp ground. Right.
But we're not hearing that case again right now, but there are a lot of discrepancies in what happened. There, there truly, truly are. And without naming any names, everyone knows. When you're dealing with a certain entity, there's always a lot of discrepancies.
They kept me off being this, the attorney for this, because they said I represented Bone Shotz in that, I represented Siskel's in that sale. At Bone Shotz.
All right, their motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got five. All right, all those in favor of the motion saying, we saying aye? Meeting adjourned, go Brewers.